Call to order the Paintsville Lake Historical Association regular scheduled meeting on Monday November the sixteenth two thousand and fifteen. Ms. Lanette, uh will you do the roll call please?
Laura.
Grayson?
Richard Mullins.
Here.
Andrea Dixon.
Here.
Bonnie Porter.
Here.
Here.
Need to um approve the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting from October the nineteenth two thousand and fifteen.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay and then all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay and then the approval of the financial reports and the payment of bills for October two thousand and fifteen. Make a motion with three.
Second.
Second. All in uh in favor? Any opposed? Okay and now an update on the home place, Mr. Russell. Where's Russell? There you are honey.
Yeah I'm in all of these places.
I know it, y'all lost me.
Uh basically what we've been doing since we're closed down is just doing larger repairs on it. And if you remember in our last meeting that I told you about the home place in October was doing good you know for that month. We actually and sales doubled last year's October so we we had a good month this time in October. Sales and visitation was up. Basically what we've been working on now is getting everything ready for Christmas, not home place Christmas. And uh we're getting all our lighting together for it which is going and we're gonna have a big event you know for that. It's gonna be on the eleventh and twelfth.
And Santa.
And we're also gonna have Santa though. If I miss anything Stephanie can.
Stephanie blew the scene off.
Yeah she'll plug in. Uh but anyway it'll be an event we're gonna open up at five o'clock the gates will open at five and we'll close at nine. I think that's what we discussed. And uh the Christmas lighting that we need now we're gonna actually it'll probably take another hundred and fifty strands of lights to do what we need to do.
Maybe tell them what your thing what's what you're gonna do when you need those lights.
We're gonna decorate the big tree out front. And we're gonna have the lighting of the tree which this tree's gonna be the biggest tree we've cemented in Eastern Kentucky.
Woo!
This thing is thirty feet tall.
We're thinking it.
It's very.
We're saying it.
Somebody not correct like they did at someone's center of house. We'll be getting in here.
So anyway this thing is like thirty feet tall and it takes four strands of lights to go around it so I said we put around.
That's ten kinds of cool.
So and we're gonna have the lighting of the Christmas tree at six o'clock so.
On Friday night.
On Friday night.
And we got plenty of promotion in place so that everybody will know about it.
Well we want a couple things we talked about today was the possibility of ho- uh running in the local newspapers in just the community. Looking for um you know asking to contact I've run this by Lanette here tourism if they're interested in having um a church group of carer car- carolers come. Um so that we could cut or any schools churches or community groups who would like to participate. So that we can you know offer it to be open to more than just a few caroling groups. Because ideally if it's gonna go from s- six o'clock technically um until nine it's a long time. And we thought about even the possibility of having two different uh groups do the live nativity scene. And I have contacted Jeremiah about it. He said he would be back in touch with me towards the end of the week. Um so we're waiting on that. But we kind of were bouncing off the thoughts of if we include more than just a few groups we open it up and see who might be interested in sending the carer their carolers from different church organizations or schools then um you know we might be able to generate more interest that way. We we were talking about I went this afternoon to um meet with Debbie about building a flyer and tickets. Because we talked about how we would well you you um yeah.
You're in your good time.
It's your thing.
Your good time you wait the dark.
We're talking about printing tickets and maybe going around to the businesses and um seeing if possibly the businesses would like to purchase tickets for their employees to be able to attend. And um we we decided on five dollars per person. And in that wanted to be the carriage ride. Russell and I haven't spoken about this since but I I think feedback would be nice. We wanted to be a a nice event but technically you know it's six dollars to get in the door at the home place at any given time right? And it's twenty-five dollars for a carriage ride. So would we be wise to and I think Russell this will disagree with me on this but that's okay.
Okay I'll go with you.
Um I am almost wondering should we charge a little something for the carriage ride? If we're only charging five dollars to get in the door and it's less than what we charge at any given time to get into the home place and we're offering all these different things should we maybe?
Well if it's free that means there's gonna be a long line doing it we might not be able to accommodate the c- the crap. You know people will just be waiting I mean.
I mean it does add cost and we're talking about Christmas time and you know it's you're worried about purchasing gifts and such as that and times you know the financial strains. But um it's gonna be a special two days and so.
Could we could we do this and you know we had such response on the Dawkins carriage rides I mean it just overwhelming. Could we create an event page on Facebook and uh you know send out um notice of the event? You know invite people to the event and see what kind of feedback we're getting.
And maybe then I mean I agree that you probably have to charge something. But I I also think that maybe it should be they can make the reservations and we can only accom- you've only got what did you say three hours Stephanie?
Well um the the ga- gates open at five it closes at nine the gates close at nine. So you have to accommodate those people who have already purchased the tickets and are inside the compound so.
To if they like purchase the tickets for the carriage ride prior to so prior to the event?
I think that's the last.
And then therefore we know exactly how many and we could cut it off like they did at the Dawkins thing. We only have room for I mean I don't know how many minutes.
You stick up because this is your thing.
I actually I actually think that you should just go ahead and let them have a break. I I mean that's the way I I feel about just like we do down you know when we take it downtown. Uh last year that's what we did and uh we had a good turnout and if we can get.
How many people did you have last year?
I would say that there was probably somewhere around four hundred people there last year.
And you accommodated all four hundred on the carriage ride?
Yeah everyone went to ride the carriage you know everybody went to ride we did.
Well.
And you know if you can get if that would entice people to come out you gotta remember that you're getting paid at the gate too so.
How far are you taking them on the ride?
We're just taking them around the building.
Okay so it's a fairly quick ride okay.
Oh okay 'cause you're not gonna you don't take them out and down you just oh I misunderstood that makes a huge difference.
Yeah this was just around the building.
Right.
And last year we did I mean we had line I I mean it was late before we got out there. But everybody was just real happy with it. The carriage rides actually last year was the best part of what we did. This year there's gonna be a lot of things there so I think that our crowd this year will be a lot better.
Good deal. Well let's let's steal let's toss around the idea of creating an event page so that we can get some some feedback and find out you know what kind of people are are interested in going. So we'll know more about we're gonna you're gonna be serving hot chocolate and and uh what some kind of a cookies or something.
Yes cookies.
I think it's exciting I can't wait. Any other news Mr. Russell?
That's about it we're accepting volunteers though for decorating purposes so. And we also need to borrow the city's bucket truck. Because we'll have to use use the bucket truck to do our tree there.
Yeah thirty foot in the air I guess.
Just call Bob and get him to get ahold of Joe for you Russell and maybe they could bring it out.
That's what I was hoping for he might volunteer a couple guys to help us while they're there. And that's what I tell you he'll take about eight hours to show me our upgrades so.
You might have the tree head.
I know somebody else is pretty good on a.
On a bucket truck yeah.
Watch me just act like he didn't hear me did he? He's really good.
But it's supposed to be great weather this week so ideally um if you know look we could get the lights purchased because we have trees to purchase ornaments.
I just hope uh that uh we can get enough of the dry kind of lights 'cause I went to Walmart today checking them out and I just hope that we can get the enough of them there to do it. Which I've gotta meet with the people at Walmart in one too so they might be able to help out. And they've got plenty of snow over there too 'cause I know John Michael is worried about not having enough snow to paint you know to get everything snowed in but they have plenty of it so.
Okay.
Cool beans.
So we wanna be able to print the tickets um for the event and um the posters obviously. Um and so I guess can does that come out of the mountain home place okay.
And we'll need one banner. We'll need a banner also we're putting up an arch too. This arch is gonna go all the way across the highway when you go in this thing is like well the high it's twenty-four foot it'll be twenty-four foot across. And the lowest part of the arch where we the bottom part of the banner will hang will be uh I think like thirteen six. Because I have to keep it up high enough for the tractor and trucks to lay there.
Cool.
That's no way the tour would let me do this.
Sounds like it's creating quite the event.
Mm-hmm.
It's exciting it's exciting.
Well I'm hoping I'm hoping we get a lot of people out for it too 'cause this is a good time of year for that.
And you di- you're still in need of volunteers so maybe when we create the the uh Facebook event we could uh request some volunteers. Maybe get ahold of the ROTC kids down here see if they're interested in coming out and decorating.
Wonder if the call would help Stephanie.
Chocolate?
Call call.
Possibly we can put we can put in for it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah we just need to net pick a couple days that we would be interested in decorating and then send it and see if Jimmy's okay yet.
Okay. Okay any other um I guess no that's it we're done. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Take it.
Okay.
All in favor we are.
All in favor yes. Any opposed? No okay.
What are these times I'm gonna go yell name?
Yeah I am.
Yeah I am.
Lordy mercy lordy mercy okay.
Oh I also wanted to thank Stephanie and the chamber. Russell didn't they their partner give him five hundred dollars.
Yay!
So we we were uh we were remiss in thanking the chamber so.
That's teamwork that's teamwork right there.
Yeah yeah.
Are we ready to start this next mamba jamba?
Yeah.
Call to order the uh meeting Paintsville Tourism Commission regularly scheduled meeting Monday November sixteenth two thousand and fifteen at four forty P M. And a roll call Ms. Lanette.
Laura.
Here.
Richard Mullins.
Here.
Andrea Dixon.
Here.
Bonnie Porter.
Here.
Jerry Daniel.
Here.
And approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting from October the nineteenth.
I make a motion with three.
Next second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? And approval of she wanted to. Approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of November the second? Need a motion to approve whenever y'all have time to look them over. Need a motion to approve whenever y'all have time to look them over. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? And then a a uh approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of November the ninth. Motion to approve whenever y'all have had an opportunity to look them over.
All in favor we are.
All in favor yes. Any opposed? No okay.
What are these times I'm gonna go yell name?
Yeah I am.
Yeah I am.
Lordy mercy lordy mercy okay.
Oh I also wanted to thank Stephanie and the chamber. Russell didn't they their partner give him five hundred dollars?
Yay!
So we we were uh we were remiss in thanking the chamber so.
That's teamwork that's teamwork right there.
Yeah yeah.
Are we ready to start this next mamba jamba?
Yeah.
Call to order the uh meeting Paintsville Tourism Commission regularly scheduled meeting Monday November sixteenth two thousand and fifteen at four forty P M. And a roll call Ms. Lanette.
Laura.
Here.
Richard Mullins.
Here.
Andrea Dixon.
Here.
Bonnie Porter.
Here.
Jerry Daniel.
Here.
And approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting from October the nineteenth.
I make a motion with three.
Next second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? And approval of she wanted to. Approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of November the second? Need a motion to approve whenever y'all have time to look them over.
Make a motion to approve.
Next second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? And then a a uh approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of November the ninth. Motion to approve whenever y'all have had an opportunity to look them over.
Why is turf ca- care back on here again?
Because we we had used the previous month's Bonnie um so the checks for this time was for September my week and there was one in October. And that was the board the board meeting which was off.
Well the others have gyms and one will have to do something different again but I don't know.
Okay so motion to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay approval of the financial reports and the payment of bills for October. Now Ms. Bonnie you had a question?
Well she answered it yeah I was out of order I didn't mean to I thought we'd already approved.
Well you're all right hon. I'd be lost too if uh Richard wasn't up here kicking me in the shins.
That's one plus about having big feet.
That's it right there. You you got my my shin kicker.
I don't have to move too far.
Uh need a motion to approve whenever everybody's had a chance to look at them or ask questions or cipher it out.
Make a motion with three.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay and then on to new business. And corporate identity package logo time with Mr. Osburn who is joining us today to um talk with us. Stephanie's been working with him about a a new logo. Um most of us had expressed well all of us had expressed an interest in having a new logo and a new brand and and we're anxious to see what he's come up with.
Well thank you all for having me here tonight I appreciate it. Um I hope I have enough copies of everything it's kind of gonna have to share with uh. There's flash that's in between there if you just wanna take one and pass it now. What we want to do uh in embarking on a new brand identity is en- enhance the public perception about there's five different sheets between each colored sheet. Um enhance the identity of the community and uh kind of bring it up to date without sacrificing or compromising at all the traditions that everyone knows uh about Paintsville specifically with Country Music Highway the Apple Festival etcetera. And so what you'll see is a a couple different iterations. This is work in progress and what I wanted to do is get your feedback tonight on where we're on the right track wrong track. Where you're gonna run me out of town where you might invite me back. Um so if I could just walk through them very briefly. The first one uh again what we wanted to do is uh try to preserve the heritage that is the music part of Country Music Highway. And if you see the the lines above Paintsville um they're they're stylized either guitar lines mandolin lines whatever your music instrument of choice is. It is an attempt to capture some essence of a musical instrument without being so blatant as to have an actual guitar or an actual mandolin facing there. One of the taglines that we kicked around was Eastern Kentucky City of Note. And the city of note has a couple different connotations one being uh the notes of music for Country Music Highway. But other notable attributes associated with the city like the Laurel and Homestead uh the Apple Festival uh the Dawkins Trail uh some of the water passageways the the you know the hiking biking the adventure tourism aspects of it. So it's noteworthy and it also has that musical tie back to uh note as well. Um the second version gives you a little bit of a look at what it might look like in color. Again the blue outline is a stylized guitar body. Uh the green arcs obviously represent the mountains. And then uh Paintsville picks up the mountains at the end of the uh the byway or the riverway. My preference and I had a tough time conveying this as my graphic artist my preference was to flip this. So the guitar arc went the other way and the 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 mountains were actually congruous rather than on top of each other. So again represented a stylized kind of uh musical instrument or even an apple. Um but again the the thought was let's try and maintain at least the iconic representation of the music heritage of the region. And introduce some of the new components especially in light of uh how popular the Dawkins Trail has become and a lot of other outdoor activities. The third one is a very simple um kind of logo where the two mountain tops dot the eyes in Paintsville. Uh very conservative but again gives you perspective on the guitar body so to speak or the doggo body uh to to get that representation of a musical instrument. The fourth one is the most conservative and frankly my least favorite but I wanna show it to you anyway. Um i- i- it's almost um an afterthought on the picture to the region of the the window to the region so to speak. Uh trying to capture the mountains Paintsville Lake or some of the riverways or byways uh that are here for patrons to enjoy. And then the fifth sheet looks at different logos. The artist tried and I don't think tried completely successfully but tried to use the word Paintsville as the stem on an apple core or the apple top. I don't think we pulled it off quite as well as we thought we were going to. But with little work it can connotate that the bottom looks to be more like the stylization of an apple top. Uh but in either case with the the representation of the apple the representation of musical instruments we can do a stylized version that's more uh modern in taste uh without losing again the the heritage that is Country Music Highway. Uh you know obviously with Chris Stapleton's big win at C and A you don't wanna throw country music out of the equation at all. It's still a big part of this region. Uh but without making it so blunt or introduce some of the other components with outdoor adventure tourism um and just the uh the overall experience that people can enjoy when they're in the region. So again work in progress I wanted to get your feedback on it and uh uh see if we can take some of these and fine tune them uh or if necessary we go back to the drawing board.
Any more having thoughts?
I I like these first two and and this one right here is really really nice too. Like you were saying this the one right here with the pencil but that didn't bring me to apple core out I know that was completely missed. And that doesn't remind me of guitar. I think that one but um that off the shelf.
Jerry do you have any thoughts on it? Is there anything you like?
Yeah is it if are we looking at just one logo or are we looking at multiple?
I think that we want one logo.
We want one.
What I'd like to do is maybe come back with take this list of seven or eight or whatever we have here and come back with two.
Mm-hmm.
And let you take a final look at the two like I said go ahead I'm sorry.
But I I think reversing this is a fact but.
Yeah and then Paintsville would hit the be at the mountains and the guitar right?
Yeah that's that's the way I wanna just for some reason the artist wasn't hearing what I was saying.
Just it just reversed that one.
Yeah and even the the uh you know anybody that knows anything about stream paths the big end of the stream is not the mountains the big end of the stream is the bottom.
Right.
Little end of the stream is the mountain. So that needs to be reversed too but I think we can fine tune that one to come out with uh a product that captures the music captures the mountains captures the culture uh captures the history of the region.
I love the saying.
I'd take.
I mean take notice note we're here with this one and that so I myself.
Well I you know on on these I kinda like this this one that uh where the the Eastern Kentucky City of Note with the guitar in it also and I kinda like that laying off the P also.
Yeah.
I think that looks a lot nicer.
That's my favorite of those. Andrew you got some.
Which one you which one you like?
That.
This one and I think we're all in consensus.
This one this one is the closest right here.
Yeah yeah.
Okay well what I'll do then if it's okay with you all is I'll go back and finish up uh tighter iterations of those two.
Yeah.
And then I'll give you a look at what it'd look like on a business card letterhead envelope signage.
And thank you notes.
Poster thank you notes yeah.
But can you work this? Can you work this, the city of note into this?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, can we?
And I kinda like the br- the blue and the green, you know, it's in the water, 'cause we are.
I do, I do too.
Well, and that's the thing about being one of these, I mean, that could be finished in blue and green too.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I think color gives it some pop, but we also have to have a black and white version of it for photocopying if nothing else, 'cause you wanna be able to reproduce it on a copier, that would be the expense of color copies.
That's that's, that wouldn't take too much to be
Uh-uh.
color this one and this this here.
Uh-uh. Yeah. So, I mean, I can, we can tighten those up. I can flip the guitar, uh tweak the stream so that it's more more realistic in terms of how a stream actually flows.
Can we balance those mountains so that they're not just stacked on top of each other?
Yeah, that's what I would prefer to do.
I think to most people, that's gonna be a a very obscure. They're not gonna see mountains that are.
No. The, you know, the one thing about, you know, even though that's a guitar body or mandolin body, depending on which version you wanna see, you can see the mountains and even that one, you can see the mountains in it. Again, I'm not real fond of that's an apple because I don't see an apple there on sale. But uh, you know, one of the things I played with, I went in and looked at uh Fender, Gibson, electrics, Martin, acoustics, uh Dobros, mandolins, fiddles. Tried to get a a sense for what the body looks like. When you lay a body of a musical instrument like that on its side like that, it is a mountain range.
Mm-hmm.
It's what you see driving up Mountain Parkway. We don't have this in Eastern Kentucky. We have this. So that's that's kind of where I'd like to take, and if that's okay with you all is doing these two a little tighter and put it in some sense of uh again, usage like letterhead, no carve, et cetera.
I like the city of note.
Yeah, we can work that in. I think that just it just adds another layer to it because everybody's trying to distinguish themselves as something. And with the Country Music Highway stretching from Ashland down into Capicaul, really anybody along there could lay claim to it, but if you lay claim first, then you're it.
There you go.
You know, if you're first in market, you're it.
Kinda how it works. That's kinda how it works.
So, but it goes beyond the music part of it, 'cause again, with the Dawkins, you you're a a city of note because you have part of the longest trail system in the state with uh the Loretta Lynn Homestead and museum. You've you've got that part of history in addition to the country music component of it. Uh, with Paintsville Lake, with access to uh the the larger creeks and rivers around here for paddling and and other boating. Um, and just, again, it lays claim to it. I mean, I could say, I lived in Dambler for twenty-six years and Dambler could lay claim to the city of note for a number of reasons, but they haven't yet, so a lot of things.
What kind, what kind timeline are we looking at? How long will it take you to come back to us with another board?
This won't take long. This this won't take long at all. Once I've gotten your feedback, you're to go ahead with those two. Um, i- if if Stephanie or Lynette or somebody can send me emails for all the commission members, I could send it out electronically.
Uh-huh.
Mm.
It'd probably be cool.
And then, you know, I I hate to presume that we get that quick a sign off, but if you wanted to unveil it around the Christmas kickoff, that that could be possible. I mean, a lot of things have to fall into place pretty quickly, but it would be possible. Or if you wanna hold off and do something, you know, a bigger splash after the first of the year, we're going into the spring marketing campaign, that's possible.
Well. Right, and that's what I'm I'm thinking. Most of us are on the same page with regard to getting getting ready to market stuff in the spring. We need this logo set and ready to roll, so we're ready to get t-shirts and
Yeah, we can.
and gear and.
'Cause it would be a pretty t-shirt.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can take that in into final final production pretty quickly. And then once you get sign off on it as as a commission, then, you know, turn around the artwork to get stuff produced, it's not gonna take long at all. And certainly, it could be done in plenty of time for spring marketing.
Cool, 'cause that boat show's coming.
They'd be prepared.
And and the Best Tour, Prince Best Tour Show, March.
Well, and we, what I'm.
That is March.
That's the one I'm thinking about, is that March show?
That's the one we want to go to, so.
It's having some stuff by March.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the twentieth or something, it could bring some red up.
Red.
Red.
So I think, um, if everyone's in agreement, we'll proceed that way. We'll do it through email and that'll expedite the process if everybody agrees that that's the way to do it.
Oh, man.
And we're all in agreement on the two that we want to, for him to move forward with?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we're.
Okay, then.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I'm going to, you want us to let her show it again? Yeah, these two, is that correct, everybody?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright.
All in favor of Mister Osburn uh moving forward and updating us with the improved designs electronically, signify with an I first. Any opposed? Okey dokey then.
And I would just suggest, once you all finish looking at those, passing all the staff and just so if something leaks out.
Oh, sure. Oh, gosh. Yes, we're not marketing people. We 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 wouldn't have thought like that.
Oh, yeah. Well, I sure would, no. That's why I'm not.
That's why we got a marketing crisis.
And I will turn something around as quickly as I can with uh our artists. Hopefully, I can get them to understand. It's time I want the guitar flipped. I may have to break out my color pencils before.
So that that'll just be trademarked.
That'd be cool too. Yeah, that'd be cool.
We can trademark this, correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Bingo.
Bingo.
And our and our uh our logo can be trademarked as well, correct? Okay, cool.
Yes.
Love it, love it. Okay, and then we're moving on. Google Maps, Mister Wade. We got our guy here. There he is. How's Scott?
Thank you, Phil. Thanks for having me today. Um, I'm a Google trusted photographer, and what that means is I provide photographic services that can go up on Google. And I'm sure a lot of you guys are familiar with Google's Street View. When you've opened your smartphone and traveling somewhere and kinda looking around the roads and whatnot, um, what we do is an extension of that where you can see inside of a business or an establishment. And uh I'm here today to propose, you guys have some great locations here, um and I'm looking at six locations right now to propose getting those on Google Maps. So right now, you can look at the streets through Paintsville as you go and press arrows and go forward. And what my service allows you to do is to go inside an establishment. For instance, the the Sip Theater downtown, let's say. Um, you're going on the street, there'll be an arrow or or marker to see inside of that. And it's based on panoramic photography. Uh, we go in and photograph um every few feet and people can go in and see that. The benefits of this for what you guys have, like the Country Music Museum, um and the Stafford House, uh people who live at the country club. Let's just say someone wants to have a wedding at the country club. And the bridesmaid wants to see inside the venue without driving here to see it. She gets on Google Maps or Googles it and you can look inside and take a tour around that. Um, one of the things that we've noticed is consumers and travelers nowadays, out especially out of state, moving out familiar with something, they'll look ahead and say, I kinda wanna see where I'm going to or what I'm getting into. And this allows them to be intimately get inside a location. Um, specifically, I was looking at the the church, uh the Country Music Museum, um Paintsville Country Club, the Mountain Home Place, the Sip once it's completed, and the Stafford House. Um, and basically, um, I go in and photograph the venue and work with Google on getting it online and as a part of Google Maps. For you guys, this is a one-time thing. It's not a reoccurring charge or anything like that. It's a one-off bill. I have to talk, I go in, photograph it and facilitate it being a part of Google Maps, which we all have on our smartphones. Um, like I said, the benefits are people get to see inside and it can entice them to come or maybe something they normally wouldn't see. They would uh be curious and wanna go see it. Um, so that that's basically it. And when I say it's a one-time thing, it's also upgradable. For instance, the 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 golf course, the country club. If you guys actually wanted us to go and do a tour of the whole golf course home by home, we could. So you can add on to it later. What I do is I'm authorized to do that. You just can't have anyone do it. I've been doing the training to go through and get this online. Um, it's one of those things, I'd like to show you guys an example on here, and I can pass this around, um of a restaurant. We we do a lot of places in Lexington all over the state, but um just to give you an idea, if everyone can see this, and like I said, I'll pass it around. So if you if you Google something, it'll say Street View and you can go out and look outside the street, you know? Um, what we do is we have it on there to where you can actually enter the business through the arrows on your smartphone or your tablet. And you can look around three hundred and sixty degrees in the venue. Um, so I can pass that around if you guys wanna try just going through the arrows there. Um, let's see here. I'm a little bit nervous, you guys.
Don't be nervous, honey.
Yeah.
Don't be nervous, not around us, honey.
I'll I'll try not to.
Well, just don't.
In matter of fact, if it's making you more uncomfortable, have a seat.
Sit down.
Come on here, Sam, get comfortable.
So.
There's Wade.
Oh, what?
Looking through that, the great thing is, I think where we're at as a society, and I'm talking tours from out of state, I think it's especially important that you guys have some great things here, especially the the museum across the way here. And Chris Stapleton, people like might wanna come as a destination there. The great thing is if they pull it up on their smartphone and Google it, it'll show, hey, you can actually look inside these places. A hotel, a coffee shop, whatever. And they'll go and kind of explore the town beforehand. It's a great sell. The interesting thing is all the locations that I've mentioned here, when you Google them, they really don't show up on Google Maps. The most beneficial part of what we do, I think, is we get you on Google. So if you Google the Country Music Museum, we facilitate it being connected to the room and the internet where people can see it. And that's a great kind of byproduct of the service. So, um, I've listed the uh locations in my estimate for what each of these would cost, um, and it happens relatively quickly. When we photograph it.
You knew I was gonna ask about timeline.
Right, um, it's as quick as twenty-four hours sometimes.
Okay.
Um, they can take up to seven days depending on how you have to let Google know uh where it's located or if it's wrong. But we've had instances where businesses have had their wrong addresses to Google and it kinda hurts your business and you might not even know that as a business owner. And we find that out, identify and correct it. And it's all on the inclusive price that we do. So.
Like the Stafford House, if you Google Stafford House, Paintsville, it doesn't show a destination.
Hmm.
Right.
So we'll Google it after this. Uh, or the Mountain Home Place, it doesn't show its destination.
He's right. And the other thing too, sometimes people open Google Maps and it has an option and it's on everyone's smartphone. You got it. Explore what's near. The places we put online show up in the top of those listings. So it will show, hey, you can explore this and go inside. So then it will pop the Stafford House, um, Mountain Home Place up in that explorer category. So if someone's literally driving, taking a road trip and wow, let's see what's around here, these will be prior ti- uh prioritized in the Google Maps listings to walk through and see.
So say we sign on now and, you know, uh, Mountain Home Place is what's running through my mind. And one of the the awesome selling features of Mountain Home Place is the different seasons changing out there. Is that upgradable to get new photography for the seasons? Or is it something, we're gonna be stuck with those pictures forever?
Yes, it is. No, you're not stuck with them forever. They can be upgradable based on when you wanna do them. Um, the price model doesn't change that much. It's basically for every panoramic shot we do, and there's a lot of technical details. Each shot is twelve pictures and then you go ten to fifteen feet, you do twelve more. Those are interchangeable. We can upgrade them at any time. And it's a very reasonable amount of fee. Basically, for every setup we do, it's about seventy-five dollars. So in other words, if you redecorate a room
Mm-hmm.
next year and you want that room replaced, we can replace that room.
For about seventy-five bucks.
Depending on that one, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, and then there's also point of interest shots. This is the other great thing. Everything that we do, Google doesn't own it. You guys own it. So it will be on Google Maps. If you have a website or Facebook page and you'd like to embed or link this material to, you guys have it and it's it's there. So you can use it for marketing. You own the the photographs, um, for your personal website or whatever you're gonna do. The great benefit is really for people from out of state to say, well, it's in Paintsville. Let's explore it. Well, they can look inside Stafford. They can look at the church and, you know, like, probably you put an organ in there. And they can see it and they wanna go see, you know, go to it, so.
Okay.
Um, that's what I'm pitching to you guys.
Okay, let's see an estimate.
Alright, I got work in.
Tuck turkey, I like the tucky.
I got one copy, I apologize.
That's fine.
Uh, I can pass it around there. And um, it's roughly fifty-two. Half is due upfront, half is due on completion. We did the product.
And you said we're looking at timeline within a week or so.
That's right. Depending on the locations. Here's the other catch too. So when we do a business, we like to get it when no one's there. We want people in there. We want them to look their steam. So the country club, I would have to do that, let's say on a day where no one's there or after hours have access there. We do photographs. And it's anywhere from, like I said, twenty-four hours to seven days depending on.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
St- um can you take photographs that we have of some of the places and put them in there or do we have to do?
Not an appeal, what they call a panoramic part, but yes, for what I submit to Google as what they call point of interest shots, I can take your current photos and I can.
Say like we wanted to show the country club as a wedding or the Ramada wanted to show their wedding venue or the Stafford.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
That's my opinion.
But not on the tour of their pictures and their place there.
Or the Sip as a wedding place, definitely. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Definitely.
So if we ha- already have them, then you can take them and do something with them.
That is correct.
Thank you. And Ramada sure needs to do it.
Oh, they are.
Uh, we were talking the other day.
We should.
Show me, honey, 'cause I'm technologically challenged.
When I showed you that, it was the sea inside.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you know, that's from the street and you go there and that's that's all.
You freeze up.
Yeah, I froze up. But that, you would go to here
Uh-huh.
and it'd have all the all the pictures of interest.
I've used it a lot. All I've used a lot, right, one, one with Ashville. Everything down there was Googled.
One day I'll travel all these too. I'll travel one day after.
Let's take this case to it, let's put it, put this around.
Yeah.
My question is, is the one place that's not on there is Loretta Lynn's Home Place. And through all of our search engines and such, Loretta Lynn is our number one search. So we should probably.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I I would recommend that that is Google page that I would talk, do the inside view because.
'Cause these people want come.
These are counter, but just to search that it's.
Right.
Like do a picture of the store or.
Like it's a point of interest photo on the of the outside and then. Well, it would make it a destination. He can he can link it to where, I mean, submit it to Google where it'll be a attraction.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't want to talk, do the talk, do work on the inside.
But we, it could be, it could be leased though, right?
That's why with that place.
That's a great idea.
That's not the way, do you?
It's like the museum.
But I probably would don't want, I mean, hints on the museum, huh?
I didn't miss that, but.
Uh-uh.
No.
And and this is something that uh that we can dis- discuss, but I can do a panoramic shot outside without going in. So you know where it's at and you can look around, uh like Wade said, not to give up what's inside.
Right.
That's an easy addition on there. And I think once again, that's called a point of interest shot and a and a photos here, they call it, it's one shot. That's about eighty dollars. You don't go inside, but at least you have that where it shows up on Google and they can look around the home place. Then you let them go inside.
And then maybe a picture of a the store, so people know that's where you're supposed to stop at.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The s- the Herman's store, they are.
Yeah, but I do think that at least to come on there.
Oh, yes, ma'am, um.
I do too. I think that the.
Now, what else, who else on it again?
We have uh Mayo Methodist, the museum, the country club, the home place, the Sip Theater after completion, Stafford House after completion. And we need to add Loretta Lynn's Home Place and uh number five store.
Okay, well, that would just be two uh destinations and pictures.
Yeah, right. And I think probably you all on this uh on the museum, if we do the panorama in there, we shouldn't do the museum. We should just do the event side, the venue side, correct?
Right. Yeah, and in fact, in that quote, I didn't want to go around, 'cause like you said, people see it online and like, oh, I saw.
Well, I saw that.
It would just be a teaser of that, but it would more be like the.
We showed you what door to go in and, you know, what else is there.
Yes. Gift shop, definitely the hallways, but on the museum part, we stop there and then entices them to come.
Same way with the home place. It wouldn't have the home place. It would just have the room that you rent and then the gift shop.
It will, it will also show the uh amphitheater?
Uh, if you want to, yes, with the with the point of interest shots, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, folks, here's my thing on it. I don't think that we have any choice. We live in a modern society where these tools are used for for uh travel. And I I just don't.
Well, even I do, and we all know I can't do anything.
I just don't see that we have any choice but to to move with the entire world and and make sure that we're taking advantage of every kind of technological uh tool that there is because folks are using it and if we don't, that they're gonna miss us. I, that's my my take on it. And anybody else got any discussion on it?
What do we need today?
Huh?
You're probably gonna have to do, if you're adding the other areas on, you're probably gonna have to be specific on what you want, but.
Well, we're we're adding the number five store and Loretta Lynn's Home Place, is that correct? Can I write on yours?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Thank you, honey.
And also, when you mention, um, you guys are the the first people in Eastern Kentucky, really, what I think is east of Lexington right now that already has two locations in town on the panoramic doors. Um, that's a great thing. That's something that's also press release for the eye. I don't know.
I surely hope the Ramada and the Days Inn do that because east of Winchester, I mean,
There's nothing.
Ramada. Ramada, it didn't give it justice to what facility that we have up there.
And we're always telling people.
I mean, seriously.
I know. I tell people all the time, you wouldn't believe, stop in there. You wouldn't believe how nice that facility is.
Yeah.
To be in little old Paintsville, Kentucky, that's a really nice place.
And it will also help with like all these, those tour people I'm working with right now. They could go in there and see and then they could say yay, nay, whatever.
Have you approached Ramada about this?
Not yet.
Have you called Daryl to see if some more of it doing like that?
I will. I'll tell him you need some to say.
Okay. All right, so we've.
Is there anybody else you can talk? Is that on?
Yeah, it's on. So we're adding Loretta Lynn's, is everybody in agreement? We're adding Loretta Lynn's Home Place and the number five store just is point of interest.
Somebody kicking me now.
Okay, and then the rest of this, uh the rest of this, everybody got a chance to look at?
When will they take the pictures of the Mount Home Place? Because right now it's not ready.
Soon as you guys, like I said.
Hopefully while it's thick ready for Christmas.
Yeah, but you know, but right now it's not ready.
Yeah, it ain't that pretty now.
No, I mean, you know.
But Christmas would be lovely.
Christmas would be beautiful though.
And also, you know what? Maybe if you, you could do some shots, like a shot of the Avenue of Angels and the shot down Main Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't you all think, it's so pretty?
Yeah, well, at least the angels.
I finally got to drive through it that night.
Lord, I had them angels are dying.
I looked and instead I just had to sleep, trying to get on Google.
If I put this on here, honey, it's Christmas on Main Street, you'll know what we're talking about as far as a shot or two of that. Okay.
Yes.
I'm I I'm just, does anybody ever have anything else discussion wise to add to this? That, I mean, you've heard what I think. It's a technological study.
Well, can we email?
I think, I I think I've, you know, well, I guess.
You're obviously sold. You did it in your business.
I've already got my store. I'm sold and there's already been two people in the store that got it from Google Maps.
Okay.
That came into my store just, well, I saw it on Google Maps, but I had to see it live. Nigga see it was real.
And and in your case, one of the neat things too, your address was wrong. You know, they had you on South Mayo and you're actually in North.
Right. But but yeah, it the the dress is wrong, but act- the actual positioning of where the store is is right.
Yeah. Right, and and we were able to have that fixed and facilitated.
I think we need a uh, you know, once we do this as well, we need a press release about uh, you know, taking advantage of of being progressive in the technological tourism market. We need to.
Yeah.
We need to take advantage of that. So we'll put it up for a vote. I need a uh a motion.
Well, I'll do it. I'll make that motion.
Voter makes, whoever makes the motion, read off exactly where you're proving what locations.
Okay, you want me to read it?
Say, I need some motion to set uh the the theater project on and read off locations.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we accept the a bid for Mayo Methodist Church, Country Music Museum, Paintsville Country Club, Mountain Home Place, SIP Theater, Stafford House, and Loretta Lynn's Home Place and number five store, Christmas on Main Street and the Avenue of Angels.
I see.
All in favor, signify with an eye, please. Oh, any opposed?
No.
Motion passed. Did you put the uh Avenue of Angels on there?
You go, girl.
Okay.
Now, there you go, son.
Yes.
Now. Do you need to sign it or?
Thank you.
I I think I do.
Baby, does she need to sign that, honey?
Honey, do you need me to sign?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Of course, that's that's gonna be a different estimate now, cause we had to get.
Well.
Right, and you, and we're all in agreement, we can email, we can email it's all.
Yeah, and I I think. Yes, I can email it too. And and those um, right.
Okay, awesome. No. No, it's not me.
And if I could get your email or a second, I can actually.
I'll put it right on here, honey.
We're bound down.
Almost, honey, almost. If everybody else says passes around, look at the details, have everybody a vote.
All right, sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, honey.
Okay, and moving on, cause since Bonnie's done now. The downtown Christmas festival, Ms. Bonnie.
Well. It is coincidentally, but I've had doomless phone calls today about if, when our teams win Paintsville Central.
When, not if.
I didn't say if, I said when. Uh their their game will be on December the fifth. So. You know, you'll just have to shut the door, somebody shut the gate, you know, they're both gonna be, if they're both, when they're both down there.
Mm-hmm.
The town will be dead.
Yep.
We'll be celebrating nothing.
As they should be, they should.
And then once they win the state championships, then we can really celebrate Christmas and celebrate. But it's what, at your pleasure what we do. I don't, you know.
I've, we talked about this earlier and I think almost all of us have talked about it, uh but we talked about moving the downtown Christmas celebration to the weekend of uh the twelfth. That way we're we're not competing with uh the student athletes' families and and the sports enthusiasts. We want to go and celebrate with our teams too, when they win the state championships. Cause it looks like Paintsville is going to have two state champions from our little town, which is pretty doggone cool. And I think we can give them a heck of a parade on the twelfth. So uh we just need a a motion to move our downtown Christmas festival from the weekend of the fifth to the weekend of the twelfth. We need to realize, you know, it's gonna be um going on with the Mountain Home Place, but the way the timelines are falling, the parade is at five. We think that it it'll be a nice blend. Just need a motion to do that.
Make a motion to move it, cause I don't care.
My heart, most of us won't. Need a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an eye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course not. Okay, we got that. And then let's move on to the old business, Stafford House.
Well, I wanna congratulate you that. So many children had such a wonderful time.
It's fun.
And those ornaments, of course, I'm not very crafty. I mean, they took their hands and then made the snowmen. I mean, you can't believe what they did.
Snowmen and ribbons.
And I'm like, how do you do that? And it was just like so intricate. And the kids had a ball.
It it was a good turnout. Um we need to, when we repeat that, we need to do a little bit better job of getting it out. And I'm gonna accept the pro- the majority of of the blame for that. Um the week prior was extremely busy for me personally and professionally, and I didn't do as as good of a job uh getting that promoted as I could have, and I apologize to you all for that. We'll do better next time.
Well, we actually have it scheduled for the twelfth again, so we might as well just leave it then.
Yeah. It is scheduled again to happen on the twelfth and uh we'll do a better job of advertising it and getting it out there. Um in other things in regard to the Stafford House?
Uh-oh. Wait a minute. If we pu- move that to the twelfth, we have carriage rides contained that day, but they can just take, they could quit.
Right.
Quit the staff, they could quit doing the rides, like we'll say, rides from twelve to four, no, twelve to three.
Right.
And then they could get the horse back out to the farm.
And it's a, it's a little something for folks to do too, while you're standing there waiting for your turn.
Yeah.
It doesn't take, uh it only takes five or ten minutes to do an ornament.
Okay.
It's something that that will occupy people's time while they're waiting their turn to do the next, the next event. So um we'll do.
Will the horse need rest, do you think? That, you all might should talk to Russell about that.
We, yeah, didn't that other guy, that horse who carried?
We've got a, we've we've talked with somebody about doing the pony.
That one guy?
He did that, yeah.
Yeah.
The pony and cart, so we we're still waiting to hear if that's gonna happen as well. So we're gonna have plenty enough for folks to do.
The pony.
And I think it'll give the, each of them a chance to rest. I think is how it's gonna work out.
Yeah.
It's what it sounds right now anyway. And then as far as other Stafford House, um we're getting ready to, Jerry and I are getting ready to do some painting and some stripping. Cause Jerry's so excited, look how excited Jerry is. Woo!
I am way excited.
Me too.
And we've got the.
Well, that one room is really looking good. We've got all that.
Yep, so we're getting some stripping done and some painting done and uh Christmas decorating. We're doing that on Friday. We're decorating for Christmas. We're gonna keep it nice and simple and historic and classy. Less is more, kinda like makeup. Um.
Sure, I can a lot make it myself.
Well, I do too, but you know, less is more.
Your work, I ain't never hurt nobody.
And Daddy has said, everybody, every old barn will be better painted.
Need to paint it, yeah.
Um.
It's true.
And we don't have, you know, we we need to, we're, we need to concentrate on getting some of the the painting and the stripping and the floors and things like that done. So next year, we can really live up the Christmas thing, yeah. We want, we wanna have it ready by spring to be presentable to our guests.
By spring. By spring, we hope to.
Um. So Jerry and I are gonna start on a room that we'll have ready there, the dining room, so that uh our downtown Christmas celebration, we have a nice room that's presentable. We have a a a talented seamstress from Lawrence County, Ms. Joan Hatfield, retired Floyd County school teacher, who is just phenomenal seamstress, who has offered to uh make us historically accurate curtains. And I, that's free. She's doing that.
Well, I mean, we've we've truly been blessed since we've had the Stafford House. You can't believe the people that come up there and volunteer.
Yeah. Yes.
I mean, it's, you ju- we're blessed. We really are.
We are, and um we uh we are just gonna move forward on trying to get some of the work done in there, making it presentable. So that's the the news on the uh Stafford House. On the SIP Theater, Wade, we're we're moving right along, aren't we, honey?
Yeah, um. As far as the SIP goes, um we've removed the metal facade.
Mm-hmm.
And um it was taken to uh scrap and then uh the city donated that money from the scrap to a shop with a car.
Damn.
There you go.
Then uh the carpet, carpet in the balcony room, all that's gone, all the wreaths out of that room and the changing room in the basement, uh dressing room's been framed up.
I love it. Awesome.
So all that was done the first week, so we're about three weeks ahead of schedule on it.
Of course.
Of course you are. Yeah.
It's funny because uh with Jerry's and I've heard it, they too, people were asking if the SIP was going to back up. So hopefully, um a lot of the people that lived out there in town didn't know that we had events going on there, just because
Mm-hmm.
uh there's, you know, it, you really can't tell the difference between event time and and the downtime. But with the, at the Paramount, I noticed in Ashland this weekend, when they have an event, they have the marquee all lit up. But when there's not an event, just the Paramount's lit up.
Yeah.
And that's the way we wanna wire up this marquee, so you guys can, the SIP sign will come on when it gets dark and it'll go off when it gets daylight. And then on event night, she can go in and flip on all the lights and it'll have the chasers and all that stuff going on.
Wow, so exciting. Okay, I can't wait. I'm like a kid at Christmas.
Oh, I'm bored. I am too. You can have fun.
I'll add, I'll add some custom stuff, so you know, it takes forever to get it made, but uh that's what we'll do in the meantime, is going to
Yeah, but uh. It's one marvelous.
Go ahead and root the rest of the wood off the building and uh prep it for the brick repair and the mortar repair and get it primed and painted. Everything that we can do while we're waiting on everything else.
We're gonna do bet those windows.
And then not mess up any of that she has. We always try to clean our mess up and be gone.
Sure.
They have it.
And you did a fabulous job.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And then um is the staple a display on the agenda or I couldn't remember all the reasons. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'll just wait on that. And then I think she's got some SIP.
Um on the on the SIP, I think we got a report from Barbie today. Did everyone get that report?
That was all last, last day.
And we've covered almost ninety percent of that, I think, in last meeting and we approved those minutes. We were wondering what you had though for ju- planned out for January, February, March? What's our future coming events?
That was all in that report as well. Um but also, we have some changes in our December schedule. Paintsville Little League was not able to secure venues for the nineteenth, so they have canceled their rental. But the Melvin Goins show on the eighteenth, Alan Bubbling for Crescentburg has, is actually renting the SIP for that, so that's not a tourism sponsor to him. He's renting that and he's got Kelsey May coming, um plus Melvin Goins and a couple others that he's somehow Allen's powers.
Cause, cause he's Allen.
I've seen cause he's Allen, that's all I can tell you. But so the December the eighteenth is gonna be probably a really big knot for us. Um uh and then with the Christmas being moved on December eleventh and twelfth, that will also be when Point of Joy is downtown.
Mm-hmm.
So I would suggest that we see what time Laura Jane's show is on the twelfth, because if it's anything compared to what it was back in the summer, it's it's sold out. Um her shows are always sold out. And so that's a bunch of kids that you've got downtown that maybe we could filter over after their show to the Stafford House.
Awesome.
Um what we have for January, we don't have anything ready right now for January. For February, we have um the JCHS choir, their Valentine show, it's agreed the thirteenth. Um and then uh then we don't have anything for March that's in books. Main Street Players will come back in in April. JCHS trauma, um even though their dates aren't confirmed specifically, we know that they'll be there in May. Laura Jane is already booked again for June of two thousand sixteen. Um nothing right now for July, August, September, Main Street Players come back in for rehearsal. Larry Sparks wants to come back again in November, and then we have Main Street Players come in. So the rentals come in throughout the year. There's not any way to really give a definite calendar right now, but those are the ones that are confirmed for next year.
Mm-hmm. Were we able to get ahold of the the group that you and I had talked about, that Russell had recommended to us, that Tyler Williamson?
Nobody provided me with any contact information on that.
I think I g- did I give you his name?
Mm-hmm.
Or I sent, maybe Russell was supposed to send, I'll send it to you, but he's really, really talented.
Okay. Here, and and like I said, there's four heroes today, and we we have money to pay him. Yeah, that's that's the thing for however that's, however that's budgeted, so.
Okay.
What time is Laura Jane's up?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that was my question.
That's not my concern, I'm going.
Traffic in the parade.
Tr- and that's competition for the home place, so that's, I mean, this summer, that downtown was crazy.
Yes.
And uh you know, it's not just kids, it's.
She had two shows on the twelfth. She will have two shows on the twelfth and she will have one show on the eleventh.
You know what her times are on the twelfth though?
I don't, I can text her and find out. I think that her, I think that one show was at ten or twelve, because one show was early in the morning. And one show was about four or five in the afternoon, so that's gonna, you know.
The parade's at five.
Yeah, we probably need to know what time her show is, for sure.
We, yeah, we need, yeah.
So that we can um, if we nee- if need be, we can uh adjust that parade time. And also make sure that the home place is still getting it to do as far as people being able to get out there. What's, are the hours sixty-nine?
When you say, when you say. The uh sixty-nine, the home place, sixty-nine.
I'm sorry. Sixty-nine.
We're cheating through. See, right after the parade, Laura Jane usually dances after, and they had the lighting of the tree. The parade usually lasts about, by five thirty, you've got the tree lit. And the only thing.
I'm just wondering if then.
It won't talk.
Home place should move it to the eighteenth.
You know, I'd be competing with that Goins concert, which is gonna be a big one. Alan, when Alan promotes it, he does it big. He really.
Well, you know what? It's a good thing that that people have choices.
That's that's what I'm thinking, keep everything.
You know, keep him, you know, and there.
Right there.
Our stuff starts at twelve, the celebration. After the parade, they light the tree, then we have Santa Claus at City Hall and we're done. So, you know.
I think we are.
I do too. I think if years past are are an example, they'll be done with the tree lighting at five thirty and then folks are still milling around, what do you do?
You know, uh.
Well, let's go out to the home place. Let's, we're already here, let's run out there. You know. And we promote it as a package, you know, promote everything together and and I think, I'm with Bonnie, it's good for people to have choices, things to do.
Of course, I mean, if you move the eighteenth, the Melvin Goins, they would not compete with the Mount Home Place. You've got two different type of people.
Yeah.
The only thing is, if you do, if you're downtown, that's all free. Why would you want to go to the home place and parade?
Okay, that's that's a good, good point, I mean.
And it's two lighting of the trees on the exact same day. See what I'm saying?
Well, by the time you got there, you're not, no.
I don't know that we might should move that to the eighteenth. Or whatever you are, I don't know.
I mean, that would be Russell's call, but I would.
Yeah.
I just think that it's something that needs to be considered, because you've got a lot of children within the form.
Well, I agree with Andrea. Melvin Goins and people that would be bringing their chip, or two different, two different venues.
I would rather be competing with Melvin Goins than I would Point of Joy.
Right.
I think I really would, considering how her show's worth this summer.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of little kids and their parents and where are they gonna go?
Mm-hmm.
And by the, and it's all, I mean, those kids have been practicing and practicing and they're not gonna, after a show, wanna go out there and see anything. They wanna go home and eat typically, so.
So what do we wanna do? Do we wanna ask Russell if he wants to move it to the eighteenth?
I think, I think it would be, I I mean, it's gonna be a lot of work to not give it every opportunity to be.
To succeed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Cause you also have the parade pumps on the content.
Is Russell's already gone?
He's already gone.
Well, we got.
Well, we got another meeting before.
Well, we can email it.
Oh, next week.
Next next Monday. Is she going to call him?
She has uh Laura Jane's calendar on her phone. I texted her but she can't respond.
Okay.
It's showing it at uh on the twelfth, it's showing eleven A M and six.
Uh is that on s- Saturday?
Twelve, that's yeah, and on Friday there's a six P M at the SIP on Friday.
Okay. So it was eleven and six. Well, that what's that? If we can just
Well, not that I'm trying to be a negative answer or anything. But you absolutely have to make a decision on moving the parade yet?
Oh, no, I'm serious, I'm not.
We we have to make a decision to on moving the celebration because we have
In order to get, yeah. A lot of promoting.
cool honest people coming in, we have shr- we've got all these people, I mean I can't, you know, they have stuff to do too.
We have to make a decision so that they can make plans, so.
And we have to get the advertising out.
Mm-hmm. Russell's good with it? Awesome.
Eighteenth, it's a nice I think that'll be better.
I agree with Andrew.
I need a motion to move the um the Mountain Home Place Christmas tree lighting and carriage ride cri- what are we calling it? Mountain Home Place Christmas event?
Mountain Home Place Christmas.
Okay, a motion to move the Mountain Home Place Christmas to the eighteenth. Between the hours of six and nine. That's what we need.
I'll make that motion.
And we need a second.
I'll second.
And all in favor? Uh and any opposed?
Uh
Okay, good deal. Alright, so now we're moving on to the veterans parking spots.
Well, we will have to go before s- oh, um
City Council. You almost said it, didn't you?
I almost said it.
We will have to the
Go before city council.
Our at our illustrious, illuminat- uh um attorney informs us that we need to propose this to city council. And when is this next city council meeting?
So it's like that second
I'll find out for you in a while.
If you can, I think it's the same.
Monday, yes. Yeah, I don't know.
If you can find out and let us know
I'll find out and shoot you guys anymore.
Okay. So that's where we're at with that. We need to to present it to the city council and um and get their input on doing the two commemorative veterans parking spots. One for uh red, white and blue painted spot that any veteran could use and one spot that is purple painted for disabled Purple Heart recipient veterans to use.
And I'm so glad you coughed that because I'd have had that done the next morning.
Get them And to get them and uh
So thank you for keeping me in line.
I think it's a I think it's a wonderful gesture. You just gotta make sure you take the problem at the beginning to the end.
Well, I I I know, yeah, yeah. I thought, oh, what?
And and we're so fortunate to have our council to keep us in check.
Yeah.
So that's good. So we will um we will continue this discussion in our next meeting and in the meantime, we'll present it to the city council and get their input on it. Okay, so
One question. It it once it goes before city council and surely we won't, it will pass.
I wouldn't think they'd be opposed.
Uh since we've already made this motion and stuff, can we go ahead and do it if it gets approved?
One city one city council approves it, you should be able to go forward with it, but it's contingent on city council approving it, so.
So say we go that night, then I can say, okay Wade, let's get this part this done tomorrow.
One city council approves it
Okay, I just wanted to make sure
We decide which spots we wanna use?
That that's
No, that I think that's one of the reasons
If I have to talk to city council.
They will tell us which spots we can use.
I I would have said
The parking parking is said it's determined by the city, the city ordinance is and they'll have to they'll have to say, you know, this spot or this spot.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's what we'll do. We'll we'll uh we'll approach city council in the most uh kind and cautious way that we can and get their approval. Okay, moving on. Approval of the financial um reports and payment of bills for October for the Country Music Highway Museum. So you finally got that bounce that check that bounced? Did that lady finally pay? Is that what that is down here?
No.
Well.
Oh, oh, uh-uh. Cracks out there.
Well, we got to do that.
Okay. We're gonna Instead of
It's it's during the summer.
Yep. And our illustrious council can't explain that. Okay, just need a motion to uh approve the minute or the uh the deals, I'm sorry.
I make that I make that motion.
And a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, Chris Stapleton exhibit, Mr. Wade.
I can't remember what we you guys voted on the last meeting, that bouncing display. Um if you remember.
We we voted. Well, let's look back at our minutes, but we voted to give him give him the go-ahead, correct?
Yeah, I thought we voted to go ahead. Yeah.
Somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
Was it it was pending the um just the estimate, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's I got that now.
Okay, awesome.
Um so this display is gonna be um fourteen feet long and double sided. So you'll be able to add three more people eventually if you want instead of uh just having this display. So uh instead of a vertical display, there will be horizontal on the at the entrance to the museum like we talked about up there. It'll be seven feet by uh however tall they're will be on that stage. I can't remember, but I think it's about six feet, so you can't see over. And then um the place in Cincinnati that built all the ones that you had up there, they're like seventy-five hundred, ten thousand dollars each. Will you be getting four of these? Uh basically like purchasing four of those. So it'd be thirty-five, forty thousand, but we can do it still cheaper than what they you could buy one for off them for all four. And the only difference is, we talked about interactive uh station at the display. Um that's the only difference in the uh the estimate than what we talked about before. Um if you had an interactive station with headphones where you walk up to Christmas display, you have headphones on, you listen to the singing. That adds uh nine hundred dollars because of the headphones. You have to buy iPod, iPod uh and what hardware it is at the display. Another stand for that and the graphics for that. So if you take that, if you decide not to do that, take that off and the estimate will be seventy-three-ten for all four instead of one. And then you can also upgrade to screen, the player, the replay videos, or you also upgrade to iPad where you could just scroll through videos of whichever individual you decide to do those on. You could do eventually for all the people where when they people pay the fee, they get a set of headphones, they can walk to Tom T Hall, plug in, watch Tom T and listen. Unplug, go to Loretta and then it could be a whole new experience. You can get people who's already been to the museum to come back because you'd have all the things, but that's up to you guys. So this is the estimate
Whatever that is.
With this is estimate is with the interactive station, but if you don't want it, just take that one off.
In discussion on that?
It's still cheaper than buying one of those displays, so you get four of them.
I'll open the discussion on that. Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. If we don't have anything to you know, interactive, we have to keep the interactive component.
The uh
To to be able to compete.
You have a Chris Stapleton display, a blank display that'll be just like the Chris Stapleton display so you can add somebody else whenever that time comes. In the meantime, you could use it to also put Chris Stapleton stuff in because you got so much content up there.
You know, you you said on the we'll have room for three others, correct?
Yeah.
So maybe we could even use our our uh additional space to showcase showcase up and coming local artists? That maybe, you know, we could help promote some of them.
Well, we're just a lot of the stuff that's just laying around in the museum that you'd probably want in a case so people can't walk off with it. I would put it in that display in the meantime.
That's a good idea, that's a great idea.
Because there's guitars, it's all graphed by people, it's just sitting there. And there's even little stuff like the you can just stick in your shirt and walk out. So as much stuff as gets there off, but I I figured that that would be, you know, a cool moment for that. So it'll all be behind glass, so we'll be able to pick it up. Then you can the uh I actually had Scott call a kiosk company that uh does iPad kiosks. And he actually purchased that pre-built. Those are about four grand a piece. So this is just us doing it out of the same materials that we're going to do the display and all that. So I don't know what avenue you wanna go on, interactive display if any, but that shows all the pricing. It's pretty the the basic one's nine hundred. Then you upgrade to a screen and a player or to an iPad station, so. And they wouldn't be able to pick it up.
He's stationary, yeah.
The app would be locked where they can't get to anything but what you want them to see. They wouldn't be able to exit out that screen and they wouldn't be able to get it out of case, so they could actually play with it, but they can't pick it up or anything. Maybe just have to remember to get the headphones off, back off of them or or if you have a station there to hang them. But they're really good high quality headphones because I figure you'd want the best since it's a country music museum. You'd want the best sounds. You don't wanna hear Chris mono.
Is it has anybody else uh have you traveled anywhere where they they had this type of interactive uh experience where they'd use a headphone?
Greslan actually has it.
Greslan has it?
You actually wear the iPad around your neck and it's self-guided or now they don't have any tour guides. So you can just walk around and when you go into a room, it recognizes what room you're in and it starts the audio for that room. Cause it uses
The Biltmore use the Biltmore uses this and we were there last uh last winter. The interactive is it makes it so much better. Yeah. You can hear the whole story. You're not waiting on a tour guide, you know, you're getting you're getting entertained and that's what we're we want them to do.
Yeah, this would be a very simplified simplified version of that, just where you can actually hear them perform. Um because I'm sure those programs like they have, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars for that, that's
But just just having that interactive ability is is what we need to have to compete.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of people that that come up here s- comes here because of Laura Lynn, so they don't know what Gary's sort of sound song sounds like, so. Um or Tom T Hall, whoever before they've come from Tom T Hall and they don't know who the other singers are, so.
Right. I guess we're gonna
And you d- it would be a really good thing to have all their greatest hit albums in the gift store if they listened because a lot of people probably buy it when they
Oh, yeah. How many headphones are in this? Just one?
One.
Yeah.
But that would be if you have the dis- the interactive display just at Christmas.
Right, if we had
And and they would they would actually be hardwired and they'd have to pick them up and put them on.
Gotcha.
And then I got to thinking, you know, I don't know how I don't know how they do that with other places. I mean, is that do you put covers over that or plan them or what?
I know at the Biltmore, it that you have those little uh sanitary deals.
They had those little cars, the things on.
Yeah, 'cause I never think about that stuff. I mean, I'll walk into a hat store just put a hat on. But a lot of people do, so.
Well, I Yeah, this is the you know, I I my vision for our commission is to be is to be progressive. You know, get outside the box and and do some things that uh will bring some people here.
And it take uh it takes about uh eight to nine weeks to get it all customized and then it takes about a week to install it. And I I weigh the labor charge on installing all of it just because I wanna
Of course you can.
I want it in there for Chris, so we'll we'll put it all in, you know, once you get it.
And we could try it out with uh you know, if if we wanted to do a motion and approve this this estimate and use the interactives. Try it out, see what the response is with our visitors to the museum and then see about adding Gary's and Tom T's and
Ready.
Mm-hmm. I I think it's a wonderful idea, but uh
Yeah, I know the interactive, you just gonna need to decide if you wanna headphone and listen or do you wanna be able to watch or do you want them to be able to do both or whatever.
I I think I think we have to have the iPad so we have the visual and the audio experience.
Right.
That's what I think. If you're gonna do it, let's just do it.
Yeah, you could suppose if you want that app, you could have pictures where they can scroll through pictures, but you but they won't be able to leave that one app, you know, it would be locked to that.
Mm-hmm. I think they need the audio and the 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 visual experience, but that's uh we'll if somebody will make a motion, we'll put it to a vote.
Yeah.
Make a motion when we agree. My house is good.
Is that good enough for council? Is that do you need to uh
Add Christmas How do I need to? That that'd be a bit specific.
Well, I'll adhere to the display. What you voted on last meeting is the interactive.
I guess
It's the interactive.
Add add we're adding interactive, yeah.
Okay.
You can just say motion to approve the exhibit with the interactive.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the the with the interactive.
And a second?
It's getting too late for me.
Second. And all in favor?
Uh
And any opposed? Now, motion opposed. Okay, and then we're on to the projector system. This has been an ongoing discussion forever and a doggone day. Miss Lynette, will you tell us what the issues are with the projector system?
It it's very complicated. Um sometimes it will work, sometimes it doesn't. And you know, there are a lot of us who want to rent the projector system to do a slideshow, you know, pass pictures. And you know, we can't have that issue go in one day for a reception and then not working. So basically, w- we just need a simple system. You know, we need to be able to play it, play a C D, play a V D, you know, with with great visual and audio and just just something simple.
It is very difficult. I mean, ev- ever it well, that one night we had that basketball thing up here.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
And if it hadn't been for Wade, we'd I mean they it was awful. So
Can can you tell us what impact it has on um people renting the venue? Weddings and receptions and blah blah blah. What's been the impact?
But there there are a lot of people who who will rent it for that purpose and obviously it sometimes, you know, I know the employees are saying, you know, we've had some issues here and there. So then, you know, the time to pick whether or not they want to do that.
It's hung up. It's hung up. It's only worked in black and white, so people's uh venues have been negatively impacted um by that projector system not working.
Yeah. Right.
And did we get a at one time get an estimate for replacing that projector system?
I think Wayne saw it, okay. But it was for a whole new system, not to repair it, it's just a new system, correct?
That's right.
Do you remember the estimate by then?
And it was fixing the it was seemed like it was fixing the audio speakers that wasn't working.
Yeah.
Because because I think we only had like two out of five speakers that worked.
Two out of five speakers that worked.
I think I'm not sure. I can't remember.
And that did
How old is that system?
And that didn't adjust the color wheel issue?
Which is thirteen years.
Huh?
It didn't do
It's been here ten years?
Yeah, that 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 was replaced with a four K projector, wasn't it?
No, it wasn't four K, but it was uh I think it's a ten eight.
Ten eight, yeah.
So would that bring us up to speed with what everyone else that is using projector systems in those type venues has?
Well, yeah, it would, but it it would depend on what you want exactly up there because he priced you where he put everything to where it's just touch remote on an iPad. We walk in, hit power, power, power.
Well, uh that's a that's a good way.
Uh so
Touch it back, oh no.
I don't know what you guys exactly wanna purchase, but his I remember his estimate being pretty detailed on everything.
Can you get us the copy of that estimate again, honey, so that we can look over that again and revisit that?
Yes, sir. I'll hold it in motion. Yes, sir.
Because that's continuing to be an issue, that projector system and
Yeah. The the screen could didn't work from the iPad. You wanna lower it, hit a button, it lowers down. You like walk across the room, flip the switch on.
Mm.
Right.
You know, you could do everything from that one or both.
Mm, cool, yeah, sure do. Yes, for certain. Nobody goes, I'm sure it is. You can't have a phone over three minutes without being outdated, so uh
Well, that 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 projector is uh more like a residential projector instead of commercial.
Instead of commercial. And we we need to be on top of our game to continue to have um competitive venue, so that's the bottom line.
But you ain't
I I I know what his estimate was before, my guess is the the stuff's gotten cheaper.
Mm-hmm, yeah, most things fast.
Everything I've noticed, that if that's the bottoms dropped out of the law electronics, but
Yeah, we did a estimate on the SIP back when they took grants. We re- we chose to remodel the lobby with the money that Bonnie got from the the uh tour Southeast Kentucky grant or whatever it was. Um but at that time, a digital projector for the SIP was like
Almost a hundred.
seventy-five thousand dollars.
A hundred grand.
And when Scott redone the estimate this time, everything was sixteen thousand for the same
Wow, that's a big, big difference.
Yeah.
Big difference, yeah.
So you could email us Scott enough updated estimate.
That's all different.
And email the the SIP one too, will you?
Okay, yes, sir.
That's great, that's great. And then we'll we'll uh address this issue after we get um get emails from Scott with some updated um estimates on replacing.
Okay.
Okay, we wanna stay competitive, so we have to do whatever is necessary to do that. And we're moving forward to Miss Stephanie, you ready?
Um, well, we, Wade filmed us a photo for um the Stapleton billboard.
Mm-hmm.
And um I'm honest to say, last week I was busy with my veterans event, so the stuff won't be there until tomorrow for Brad, but he did say six hundred dollars to rewrap it.
Yeah.
That's everything. Um, and um I, and we're gonna be running an ad for the museum, Lynette's gonna give you some information for the front porch picking, and then um I spoke to Bonnie today about uh which I did not realize that they did, about running an ad in the papers of all the events for December that we have going on in one thing, one ad. Um, and then we have scheduled um the next Everyday Moms for December the second to promote what's going on.
Yeah.
In December.
So then the um we talked about that billboard and that's what we is had expected, a six hundred dollar rewrap fee, so we're all cool with that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And then the advertising for the front porch picking, I assume you're talking about on the fifth for their Christmas?
Yes, for their front, yes, yes.
Okay, good deal, 'cause that's a that's a really cool, neat thing. We wanna get the word out about that. Because that'll draw people that are really not interested in, well, they they should be interested in our two championship teams, but it draws a lot of people from surrounding counties, so we wanna promote and get them out.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a great idea.
And I spoke, um, I gather my fax says I I think I sent you all the um how our our chamber uh uh sends out emails and it's uh basically showing what's going on within our community. And um it is called Constant Contact. And um it is something that we might need to look into. Fran's gonna get me the information so that you're sending out, um Frankfurt Tourism sends out blisters all the time.
Mm-hmm.
And it's very informative, it keeps, you know, everyone up to date on what's going on. And I think it's something that we need to consider doing, so that we can promote.
That's the one you sent us the sample of, you, I like that.
Yes, yes, and it's called Constant Contact, and so Fran's gonna get me the information, so and um I know that if you're a for the chamber, it does not cost them any money 'cause I asked her the price. It doesn't because it's all within, all the chambers have it. Um, but as if you're a member of Chamber, then you get a discount. So once I get the information, I'll make contact and see what they can do because then Lynette can send those out with all the different things going on. Obviously, it's gonna be the responsibility of whoever has an event going on to send it to Lynette for her to send out, but we can work on promoting that. And then um Friday, I have an appointment with Leah, with Lamar, to finalize the decision on, she's finally got me billboard selections from the different areas of state and and uh I'll meet with her for to finally decide on those to roll out come spring on the Dawkins billboards for that.
Cool. And did we send the letter?
And the letter was sent to, you can assign that we did, she sent an email.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks but no thanks letter.
Yes, absolutely.
In a nice way.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good deal. Anything else, Miss Stephanie?
Um No, I guess the only the only guidance is that so I'm gonna take and use the budget on the the uh posters and all of that for the the Mount Home Place, we'll go out of Mount Home Place, right?
Correct.
And um then no, I guess then we'll wait on um feel and where we can go from there to you want to decide.
To get a new brain?
Get an awkward one, 'cause we do have some
She gives up.
Kentucky monkey, we have some things, ads coming up that we're gonna have to be placing, so.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Wait for spring.
We see the talk about the uh Frankfurt emails that I had, it reminded me that iPad interactive station also, you could get it where people enter their email address and when they hit it, and it'll email Lynette their email address, so you you can start compiling, you know, this, the everybody.
Mm-hmm. That's the one we talked about during our door, and that's what we were hoping, we were gonna have that same capability at State Fair, so we
Yeah, yeah, with this stuff right here, that's
We're familiar with that and that's awesome. That will compile a a data bank that is
Yeah, and the stuff from the State Fair we wanted on the database so that we can
Awesome.
because they asked and so
Oh, yeah, that's cool, too cool.
Yeah, and you can have a screen that's like enter your your email address and or just no thanks, but most people go ahead and because you wouldn't wanna restrict them to not be able to listen because they won't get a free mail.
Okay, and all right, so we finished, do does there need to go into an executive session, commissioners?
What, is it?
I didn't see any need.
Was there, was there something
No, no.
It was supposed to
Okay, we're skipping the executive session, council.
One of you make a motion.
Somebody make a motion.
I make that motion that we don't go into the executive.
Okay, now we need a motion, a second.
I second.
Okay, good deal.
I'd challenge him if he didn't have that.
I don't know, all in favor, say aye.
I I I just
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't think so. Okay, and
I have a question, Lynette, is that like standard on every every meeting?
Just so we're there just in case.
Just in case, we take a notion, we need to do something.
Okay.
There's no, there's no harm in that on there.
Okay, so, any?
I I thought there was something going on, I didn't know about it.
Well, I remember being on the other side and they'd stay in executive session forever and they'd come out and say, no action taken, and I didn't like that worth of derm, we sat up, what? Stay there all that time, you didn't do nothing.
So we have any other comments or concerns before we wrap this deal up?
So do you want me to send, once we get the ad, to promote everything going on Christmas here, shall I send it to you all so you can decide that we have all
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
All our dates, all our dates, no problem.
all our dates in. And they have a lot going on.
Mm-hmm, and to make sure that all the dates are where they need to be and the times is where they need to be to to benefit everyone.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments?
No.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Stick a fork in it, we're done.
Aye.
Aye.